Mr. Men.
Here.
Mr. Arroyo.
Here.
Mr. Gleese.
Yeah.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
And President Bakay.
Council President Bakay is excused this evening. A few friendly reminders, please note this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. Today's committee meeting does not have a scheduled public comment period, but counselors may invite public comment after each item on their agenda. If you are making a public comment, please do so at the microphone. State your name and address for the meeting record. Also, please be sure to silence any cell phones and devices. One note, item six, resolution sixty-four would not be presented during the community planning committee uh this evening and has been stricken from the agenda. I'll hear a motion for the approval of the August eleventh, twenty twenty-five committee meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion, do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
We'll kick it over to the Personnel Committee, Counselor Gleese.
Thank you, Vice President. The Personnel Committee has two items on the agenda for tonight. The first item is the nomination of Keisha Finney for reappointment to the Public Art Advisory Board. So Ms. Finney has been working, has been serving on the board for some time and her term has expired and she is willing to be reappointed as an alternate, alternate member of the board. And I'll open up for any comments, questions from console, from all the members of the committee.
Counselor Gleese.
Thank you, I would just like to say that Ms. Finney has been a great public advocate for art here in the city and I look forward to seeing her reappointment.
Thank you for your comment, Counselor.
Counselor Gleese, just also want to add, many of you know Keisha through her work as an artist here in Lancaster City and as someone that serves on that board, I think it's really important that we have local artists on that board. So I'm really glad that we're reappointing Keisha.
Thank you, Counselor, for your comments. Any other comments or questions from console as a whole? From the public? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to move this nomination to our next council meeting.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Thank you. And the next item is the nomination of Stephen Campbell for reappointment to the Sewer Appeals Board. So Mr. Campbell, so there isn't much to say about this reappointment. So I just want to thank Mr. Campbell for willing to continue to serve on the board. I'll open up for questions and comments from all the members of the committee and council. From the public? I'll make a motion to move this nomination to our next council meeting.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes the Personnel Committee, Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor Gleese. We'll move to the Finance Committee. This evening, we have one item on our agenda, Administration Bill Number Six, twenty twenty-five, which is authorizing the issuance of a general obligation note. With that, I'll invite Director Campbell to introduce the bill. Good evening.
Good evening. If you can just leave yours off, sometimes we get feedback until you're ready to talk. Sorry, we have some issues with the mics. So tonight, we're introducing an ordinance for the general obligation, an ordinance of a general obligation note. This note is for interim bank financing for the forty-two inch water transmission mainline that we've discussed on several other occasions over the last year or so. And the project has also been included in our capital plan for a few years and is included in the capital budget that we've been presenting since June. And you will see the first reading of that ordinance for the capital budget on September ninth. Because this project is for the water main, this debt will be financed through the Water Enterprise Fund and will not affect the general fund. In March, you may remember, we reviewed, as we reviewed the twenty twenty-five bond financing, we discussed that we would be returning to you later this year for financing for this project. So this is us returning to you for this project. And as you may recall, we included this debt in our projections when we showed the principal and interest costs for the bond on the graphs that you received for that bond because we knew that this project was coming. So as a reminder, this project will ultimately, long-term, be financed through PennVest. PennVest requires that the project be shovel-ready before they will loan funds. So all of the design engineering permitting must be completed and the work needs to be ready to start before PennVest will award the loan. Because of the timing of some of the grant funds that we were awarded for this project and because of some of the current uncertainties for timing of procurement of equipment and materials, we would like to get orders out for the materials for this project before PennVest will award the funds, for the long-term funds. So that the grant funds are assured of being used and so that the project can start as soon as possible when we get the loan funds from PennVest. If you recall, we initially thought that we would include some of this funding for the materials in the bond financing. However, PennVest will not refinance permanent or bond financing. So this is an interim bank note financing and this will allow us to move all of the costs eventually into the PennVest loan as they do allow interim financing to be included in long-term debt. This will keep interest costs down very significantly for us as PennVest interest is lower than bond financing and it will make the interim financing well worth the savings and interest expense. And Daryl will talk a little bit more about that as well. The interim financing is also structured as, like a line of credit. So we will only draw down and therefore only pay interest on what we actually need to use. So I'll now turn it over to Daryl to provide more context.
Good. Uh, thank you, Tina, for that introduction and great to be before you again. As Tina indicated, we talked about this early this year, I know time flies. Here we are in September already. I put before you a narrative and some, one financing schedule and one graph. So hopefully, we can walk right through that and make sure you have an understanding of what we're doing and why we're doing it. And Tina touched on a lot of this, but clearly, you're moving forward with the water transmission line project. I'm not the engineer in Public Works, but as I understand it, that's gonna, you know, provide resiliency and redundancy to the sole water main that was put in place and put in the ground in nineteen fifty-five, nineteen fifty-five. And, you know, with that, it's certainly reaching towards the end of its useful life. So the total cost of the project is estimated at forty-one million dollars. As Tina indicated, permanent financing for the project is expected to be secured by Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, most of you know it as PennVest, and the city and its project engineer in the process of moving that application forward. And again, as Tina indicated, you know, due to the expected time required until the city is prepared to make that application and more importantly, actually receive the funding, you know, it behooves you to secure this interim financing in the amount of about thirty-two million dollars so that you can preorder and purchase the primary materials, being the pipe hydrants and fittings, et cetera. By having those available when you actually go forward and bid the construction phase of the project, you should absolutely, it's certainly expected that you will, you know, one, be able to proceed in a more timely manner to move the project forward. And maybe more importantly, from a cost-saving standpoint, is you should get better bids for the construction phase because the contractors will know, when they get, when they put the bid in and get awarded, they're gonna get to work right away as opposed to, you know, starting to work six months later with, you know, some unknowns. So I really think, and this is clear, this whole plan was really obviously put together by Department of Public Works and your engineers, et cetera. So we're just helping move that forward and facilitate it with this interim financing. Right now, the city's at its sort of immediate or crucial requirement, and I don't want to get too technical, but you may have heard this before. In order to move forward with securing the interim financing that we're gonna do, you get what's called a letter of no prejudice from PennVest. What that means in plain vanilla talk is that by having that letter of no prejudice, you can now incur the costs and potentially even pay the cost before you actually get the PennVest financing. So it's kind of no prejudice that you can include those costs and roll it into the financing. So at the end of the day, the interim financing will be paid off and rolled into the lower interest rate PennVest financing, again, as Tina said, instead of including in the two thousand twenty-five bonds. So a lot of interest cost savings by rolling the primary costs, being the materials, into the PennVest loan and not doing it under what would be more conventional financing. So with that, page two is really putting together the schedule, not the project schedule, intertwined with the financing schedule. I'm gonna stress, this is tentative, I think you all understand, we try to remain fluid and nimble. And I also stress that this is a sequencing schedule. You know, I'm gonna put dates here, but understand that if, you know, kind of an early event slips, that means the whole schedule's gonna slip. So I think it also just gives you a framework of how these all intertwine and move together. So of course, we're giving you the presentation this evening. In mid-September, we expect to get the letter of no prejudice, again, that critical document from PennVest. And with that letter of no prejudice in hand, we would actually, we, Concord, would actually move forward with the interim financing requests or proposals to be sent to the banks. And then we'd hold the city council, at the city council meeting, we would hold the first reading. That may or may not be on September ninth, it may be on September twenty-third. Again, I think we're gonna stay, need to stay a little bit nimble there. And then moving forward on this timeline, then in mid-October, we would get the bank proposals. Obviously, we review them and make a recommendation as to the best proposal. And at the city council meeting in October, whether it be October fourteenth or October twenty-eighth, have the second reading, actually accepting a proposal. And critical, critical, we must have the letter of no prejudice in hand before you award financing. If not, we risk having this project not being eligible for PennVest. So obviously, we're very cautious of that and wouldn't bring it to you beforehand. Then as the current schedule, on October twenty-ninth, the city plans do actually submit the permanent financing application to PennVest. Then we would close on the interim financing in mid-November. Having that interim financing in place, that assures you, you have funds in the amount of the thirty-two million dollars to actually place that order. Again, you wouldn't want to place order for thirty million dollars of equipment or materials that you don't have financing in place for. And then, so you can, and that project lead time for those project materials is four to six months. So that's really the lead time that you're gaining in your schedule by doing the interim financing. Then with the PennVest application towards the end of October, the next PennVest meeting for the award of financing is in January of two thousand twenty-six. Again, moving forward in the timeline, in February, February slash March, the project materials would be received and you would be moving forward with the construction bid phase for bid and award. So again, then you'd be ready to move forward with the actual, actual project commencement. Then in April and May of two thousand twenty-six, you'd have your legislative process or ordinance process for the permanent PennVest financing. Project construction would begin, we would expect to close on the PennVest permanent financing. And when you get the PennVest permanent financing in hand and in place, you would actually pay off the interim financing for the, for the materials portion. The project is expected to be completed in April of two thousand twenty-seven. We are gonna let the interim financing have an extra year of its maturity. Again, trying to be cautious, we all know projects can get delayed. And also, the, there's a secondary purpose of the interim financing, not only to bridge the materials acquisition, but you can also use that interim financing for like cash flow for the project. Because if ever, the reimbursements that come from PennVest would not be quite timely. You want to have the interim line of credit, it's serving a dual purpose. It's the materials phase and it's also the potential delay that you might have from PennVest because they work on a reimbursement basis. The most we can have is a year, we're allowed to have the interim financing be one year after the estimated completion date. So that should be sufficient for you. Tina touched on the top of page three, the interim financing is on a drawdown basis or a line of credit. Again, minimize on the interest expense. The interim financing will also provide an amount to pay the interest on the interim financing during the project phase. And that's to avoid the budgetary impact. You know, you're gonna have to go through the PUC process, et cetera, to be able to raise water rates outside the city. So the plan would be to have the interim financing also be available to pay the interest to the extent you want to do so. Not a requirement to do so, but it's available to do so should that be necessary within the budget. The next bullet, I mentioned that the interim financing will mature in June of twenty-eight to be that additional one year, provide the project cash flow. Moving forward on page four, kind of like a sources and uses here of the, of the interim financing, again, two critical points, provide the funds to order and purchase the materials and to provide the bridge loan or cash flow loan during the project phase. So the total cost of the financing will be thirty-two million dollars. That's providing really four components. Thirty million dollars for the project materials to be purchased. Estimated capitalized interest or interest on the interim financing of about nine hundred thousand dollars. The financing costs and about a million dollar reserve, again, for that project cash flow need. Remember, you won't draw on that, you won't use that unless you absolutely need it, but it's there in case you need it. So that's how we arrived at interim financing note of thirty-two million dollars. The next schedule is really presented as a not-to-exceed amount. It's kind of like I have to show you that, but no way do we expect the interest expense to be that great because again, it's a drawdown and a prepayment feature. And lastly, on page five, again, a graph similar that you have seen before and we actually showed you as a looking forward back in, back in March, we were doing the two thousand twenty-five bonds. So the red bars here are the existing water fund debt service and the blue lines are the expected water fund debt service after what would be the forty-one million dollar PennVest financing and how you, and how you step into it. So overall, water fund debt service will go from about fifteen point one million next year up to about eighteen point five million beginning in two thousand and twenty-eight. Questions or certainly entertain those?
Can I just add quickly too, I don't, I don't think anybody from DPW is here, from Public Works, but I did just want to say the timeline might seem a bit aggressive and we did talk to them about that quite a bit. So it sounds like we will have three different contractors doing the work because we are able to get all of the materials together where it's easier to, to be able to do that. So it'll kind of be work going on simultaneously, which will increase the speed of it. But one of the main reasons for that is, and I won't get into all of the details, but to try to ensure that we can get this in our PUC rate case as quickly as possible, just because we know it's such a big project and a large portion of it is for outside of the city as well as some inside. So just wanted to comment on that schedule. And if there's questions about, specific questions about the schedule or the project itself, we can have Public Works comment on those at a later date.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions, with this being short-term financing, is the rate variable or is this a fixed rate? I see here, there's a five percent.
Yeah, that's, that's an estimate. Actually, when we do our request proposals, we will ask for both variable rates and fixed rates. Probably, probably your preference would be to have a fixed rate. But with the short-term nature, we're gonna see what we get, you know, kind of like bid it out or ask for both and do an analysis and figure out what's more beneficial. If we get kind of a very aggressive or favorable variable rate, and we'll certainly get a cap rate, you know, just look at what the variable is in the cap versus what the fixed rate is that we get, so.
Okay, thank you.
and we'll certainly get a cap rate, you know, just look at what the variable is in the cap versus what the fixed rate is that we get, so.
Thank you. And my second question is, with the short-term financing being $32 million, is the remaining $9 million estimated, the estimated construction cost? Thank you. Any further questions from the committee? Mayor Sorachi?
Not, not the committee, but I just want to thank Tina and the Department of Public Works and with the assist from Concord. I think one of the things that's very momentous about this, and I just don't want it to get lost in the mix, is the point that Tina was making about the aggressive schedule. In the past, we have not been, we have been borrowing money to do the design and then, and then do the construction. And we have had large sums of money that have been sitting, not being utilized in, in an aggressive time fashion. And that is a habit that we have been trying to work ourselves out of, I think, for the last eight years. Because when you borrow money, you should be spending it very quickly. Within three to four years, that money should be in the ground and then that should be coming back. This is going to be really aggressive with a borrowing. Here we are at the end of almost, you know, the end of 2025, 2028, this project is complete. So two years in. These are the kinds of benchmarks that council should be asking for in the future to really understand if the capital projects are indeed ready and that we're going to spend the money in the timeframe that we need to. And so I really applaud Tina, Director Campbell, the directors Campbell, Steve and Tina, for really leading off on this work and the kind of planning that went into the capital planning. Effort overall is allowing us to do this. And council should also be really monitoring the frequency in which we are going to PennVest for rate case increases because as Tina mentioned, this is a very, this is a once-in-a-generation improvement that is being made. And while it's $40 million for this phase, it's a lot more than that when you add all three phases together.
Thank you for that context, Mayor Sorachi. Any questions or comments from the finance committee? Any questions or comments from council as a whole? Councilor Hirsch?
Thank you. And this might not be the question for you, this might actually be more of a question for Public Works. But I just see that there's an estimated four to six month delivery for the materials. How solid do we feel about that given? I mean, I don't know what, if anything, is being sourced from overseas, but with the trade situation kind of being volatile, I'm just curious if the city has any thoughts on that.
I think that is probably more of a question for Public Works. I will say, I asked a few different ways if they feel confident with that four to six months and they were, they were feeling pretty confident about it. So I think they can probably give more details, but.
Thank you, Councilor Hirsch. Any additional questions or comments from full council? Councilor Med?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And thank you for the presentation, this was very helpful. My only question, and you may have answered this, when we do have the RFPs from the banks, is that going to be something that council will approve or is that something that the administration will unilaterally take care?
So typically, we receive those RFPs back and then bring the proposed RFP from the administration to council. You would see that with the second reading of the ordinance, so you would see the full, the full amount then? Am I saying that, am I stating that correctly?
Yeah, the ordinance itself will, will accept the proposal that is being recommended.
Thank you. And that concludes my questions, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Councilor Med. Any additional questions or comments from council? Any from the public? Great. Thank you both for the presentation this evening. I will move to, or I will motion to move bill number six to the September 23rd meeting for first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes the finance committee. We'll move on to community planning, Councilor Craig?
Thank you, Council Vice. We have five items on the agenda this evening, first being the review of the historical commission, review of the historical commission recommendation for demolition of a garage at 53 North Water Street. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. This resolution is a recommendation from the historical commission to approve a demolition of a two-bay, one-story freestanding cement block garage behind where the red peddler is at 53, on 53 North Water Street. It is, it was built in the 1940s and they did receive zoning approval on July 23rd. And the historical commission is recommended, recommended approval at their meeting on August the 7th for demolition of this and it will remain as a surface parking lot.
Thank you, that's pretty cut and dried. Are there any questions from the committee?
Councilor Craig, just, is the parking lot short-term or have they mentioned any long-term use potentially for that space there?
It's a pretty small space. In fact, the reason why they want to demolish it is because they feel like it's not safe to try and pull two cars in there. So I believe it's going to remain as a surface parking lot, as far as I understand.
Thank you.
Great. Are there any questions from council as a whole?
Just a comment, I did look at it on Google Maps and yeah, it's, it's going to be like a space or two at least, so.
Thank you, Councilor Hirsch. Well, then that will, I'll do that. I'll make a motion to move this forward to September 9th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item we have on the agenda is Administration Resolution 61, authorizing an application for local shares. And we have several applications for local shares, so I think what we're going to do.
I'm sorry, Councilor Craig, I think we have Resolution Number 60 on the agenda next.
60, oh, thank you very much. Okay, Administration Resolution Number 60, I skipped right over top of it, my apologies. Amending a projection easement granted to Haker Arcade Condominium Association. And I'm glad you're here, so take it away.
Thank you. The original resolution was passed by city council on May 14th, 2024. And if you recall, it granted an easement so that balconies for the condominium, condominiums can hang over North Water Street and West Grant Street. The original easement agreement incorrectly listed the required height of the balconies as 15 feet above the street, but the amended easement agreement is intended to correct the minimum height to 13 feet and 6 inches, which is in compliance with the city ordinance is current, currently in place. And that is the only change to the easement agreement this evening.
Thank you, I have no questions about that. Are there any questions from the committee? Questions from council as a whole or comments?
Just a quick question. If it were up to me, I would probably, you know, if I could wave a magic wand, me personally, I would take traffic off of the West Grant Street portion by Market. But I do know that some box trucks do go through there every now and then. Are we okay with the height in light of that? I don't know if it would be an issue or not, but it's just a question I have.
That is a very good question. This came through the Department of Public Works and the right-of-way engineers. So I will have to get back, ask them and get back with you on that.
They probably, yeah, they probably only overhang like the sidewalk, so I'm sure it's fine, but.
How far is the bump out, I guess that's the question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Hirsch, that was a great question. I'll make a motion to move Administration Resolution 60 to full council on the 9th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now we will move on to Administration Resolution 61, authorizing an application to local shares account program by the Lancaster City, Lancaster Public Library. And then there are several local shares accounts that we will review. Thank you, Director Campbell.
Thank you. So before we get into the resolutions, I wanted to just give a brief overview of the Lancaster, of the local shares account or LSA grant program. I'll refer to it as LSA this evening. This is a Penns, this is a Pennsylvania statewide program that's funded through the Commonwealth Financing Authority and it distributes state gaming revenue. So it's now the fourth year of this statewide program. There was, there were some individual counties that did it previously, but this is the fourth year for the statewide program. So grants can be awarded from $25,000 up to a million dollars through this program and there's no match requirement, which makes it very popular for community benefit organizations in the community. The grantee must be a governmental agency of some sort. So we do get many requests from community benefit organizations to apply for this program. And then we serve as the grantee and they serve as the sub-grantee. More than one grant can be awarded to the governmental agency or the municipality. And previous years, we have received multiple grants for the community through this program. So just to give you a summary, in the first three years, we have made 35 applications for LSA grants on behalf of community benefit organizations and, and a couple of city projects as well. 12 of those applications were awarded, at least partially, and it totaled $6,923,000 in funds to the, to the community, which is great. And then the remaining 23 grants, 12 were denied, but 11 are still pending from last year. The awards have not been made yet for those applications. So the LSA funds can be used for acquisitions of property, purchase of equipment or construction projects, either new or remodeling. And you'll see a range of all of those projects in these requests. Because this is a state grant and we are the grantee, we must have a resolution from council allowing us to apply for each individual grant. These resolutions commit the city to applying for the grant, but it does not guarantee funding, nor does it risk anything for the city. The applications are due November 30, November 30th and we anticipate probably 10 applications this year. And we like to have each of the organizations attend one of the council meetings or committee meetings between now and November 30th to talk about their projects so that you can, as you review the resolutions, you can see the projects. So you'll see several projects on various agendas in the next couple of months. So tonight, we have three of them on the agenda since, since we struck the last one. Each of these, well, one of these is present tonight and the other two will be present at one of the council meetings in September. So I'm not going to talk long about the, the two that aren't here since you will hear from them later. But I can, I can talk about them now or wait and do each resolution separately?
I think we can do them now.
Okay. So the first resolution is for the Lancaster Public Library. It's a, it's a million dollar grant request and it is for, it's to purchase actually a parking lot close to their book resort project on North Marshall Street. It will provide some income for them as well as a place to continue to have people park. So I will let them talk about that. They are attending the council meeting next week on September 9th.
Excellent.
And then I, I'm going to skip here, I don't believe anybody from HDC is here. Don't see anybody.
I don't see anyone.
So theirs is also a request for a million dollars. They are working on phase three of the College Avenue redevelopment. And the phase three is a broader phase that really has some mixed use, mixed income space in it. So again, I will let them talk about that in more detail.
Excellent.
And then the last one is Anchor Lancaster and they are actually here this evening. So I'm going to ask Patty to come forward. While she's coming, theirs is also a request for a million dollars and it is for renovations to the day shelter at Tenfold, but I'll let her do the explanation.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the opportunity to hear what I have to say tonight. So Anchor Lancaster is a nonprofit that works with the homeless and low income here in Lancaster City. Right now, we are, our program is housed inside a First United Methodist Church. We've been renting space there for the last nine years. We started as just a breakfast program and last year, I think, we served 42,000 meals to our hungry neighbors. We like to listen to what our neighbors have to say and we found out that many of them were taking baths in sinks at Market, at CVS. And we had showers, so we started a shower program. The goal was to do 12 showers a week. Last year, we did 6,000 showers, so yeah. And then during COVID, we realized that all the public buildings were closed and so we started a day center, it just seemed to make sense to us. And then we started a laundry program and started a case management program. Our case management program helped people with building resumes, applying for jobs, finding housing, helping connect them to medical services, drug rehabs, and just really meeting them wherever, wherever they are. We partner with many different other agencies here in the city. We work with Lancaster General, we work with Penn State Health, we work with UPMC, we work with the social workers at the police station, we work with the social workers at Tenfold and from the food hub and the outreach worker who works with the merchants here in the city. And so our space at the day center, it started as just a temporary winter shelter and then we did a temporary summer shelter. And we quickly outgrew our space. Our space was only able to hold less than 20 people and literally it was wall-to-wall. And so we'd been searching for another place for our day center and we were just so grateful for Tenfold and when they did the temporary shelter last year, that one of my caseworkers and I went down and volunteered for the overnight shelter and as I'm standing in that shelter, I was just like, hmm, I wonder if we could be here too. So we started a conversation with Tenfold and they just have welcomed us with open arms. We went for one week, we've been there for eight months. And we're looking to make more of a permanent partnership with Tenfold to, so we can heat that area, cool that area much more efficiently than what it is being done now. With that, we will need to do some construction of a temporary space, but something that, we put up a wall. And I feel bad saying that we want to put up a wall because we're trying to tear walls down with our neighbors. But we can put in heating and we can put in cooling. And that is our phase one plan. But we're also exploring whether we will move the entire program down to the Tenfold space where we would put in a commercial kitchen. And if you've been in the garage, it's very large and it would be the kitchen, the dining room and the day center. And then we would, there's an annex that is next to it, which would be offices. It would be our laundry, we place for case management to work. Also would be for bathrooms and showers. And that is the request for the funding for that program.
Thank you so much for that description. Looks good. Are there any questions from the committee?
I just want to thank you for your services for our community. I know it's hard, I've worked with Border Rescue Mission, I volunteer to feed them. That's about as far as I go. But it's nice to talk to them and see where they're at in life and how they want to improve their life. And these services are really important for them to find work and also shelter. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the committee? Council as a whole? Councilor Hirsch?
Thank you, Council Craig. Just also echoing so much gratitude for the work that Anchor does. And in particular, the willingness to collaborate with other organizations in the city, I think, is really commendable. And it shows, you know, that we can do a lot to meet a lot of need. And I think what I hear you saying when you're talking about all these things. And I think what I hear you saying when you're talking about all these things, meals, showers, place to be, place to be out of the, the heat or the cold, like you're meeting immediate needs. And when we collaborate, as, as, you know, all, every one of us that's a part of this community, if we work together, we can do a lot more. And so that's one thing that I've admired as I've watched the work that you guys have done and the way that your programming has grown over the years. So I just want to really commend you guys. Best of luck with the application.
Thank you.
Are any further questions from councils whole or comments?
If I may, Counselor Craig?
Counselor vice?
First of all, thank you for sharing the outline of the vision. It seems very exciting. Just because we have the mics in front of us, if there's an opportunity for folks to invest their time or treasure into the organization, how can they find out more information?
So they can visit our website at anchorlancaster.org. There is information there about volunteering and about giving.
I know it's a passionate subject in our community today, so the more that we can help invest our resources into organizations like yours, I think it's worth mentioning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add too? I believe the total project is about one point six million. Is that, is that correct? At least that's what my notes are saying, so you need a little bit more, is what I'm saying.
No, it is, it's actually two and a half to three million.
So it's gone up since these news.
Yes. For the day center alone, to, to, to put the wall up and lower the ceiling a little bit and put in the unit for heating and cooling is about a hundred and forty thousand.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Want to step to the mic over here? Hold on, somebody's coming to help you.
Robert McLean, one twenty-three South Christian. Why, this is a small item on your calendar here, but you keep talking about, well, you don't, but I mean, it always comes up, parking throughout Lancaster City. And I'm always wondering about all the massive parking lots that we have. Why can't a lot of them be permeable, so we don't have all this water running into the sewers?
Thank you. And I think we'll address that in a little bit. Okay. Can we do these, can we do the local shares together, or should we do them individually? Okay. Thank you so much. I'll make a motion to move the local shares applications, Administration Resolution sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three to full council on the ninth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Counsel Vice. That concludes community planning.
Thank you Counsel Craig. I forgot I was running the meeting today. We'll move on to the Public Safety Committee. Counselor Diaz?
Yes, the Public Safety Committee has Administration Resolution fifty-nine, twenty-two five, adopting the Lancaster County Hazard Migration Plan. And we do have a presentation that will be done by Deputy Fire Chief Christopher DeLong, City Emergency Management Coordinator.
There you go.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. This is a culmination of a two-year project that I've been working on with the Lancaster County Emergency Management Agency and fellow municipal leaders in emergency management to update the county hazard mitigation plan. The original plan was written in twenty nineteen, and this is the first revision of this plan. The importance of the plan writing and revising is to make sure that we have a current idea of what our hazards are in each municipality in the county. So it's, it's a, it's a very thorough project. Usually takes a year, took an extra year this time. But it goes through and they solicit information from all the municipalities, all the public utilities, all the school districts, pretty much everybody that comes in contact with Lancaster County in the municipalities, and they try to get a good idea of what the hazards are, both natural, man-made, criminal in certain circumstances. And then this massive plan, that's six hundred and seventy-four pages, gets written and gets presented to each municipality for adoption. And what this does for us, it's a written record of our known hazards in our municipalities, and then it allows us to submit and apply for grant funding to mitigate those known hazards ahead of time, so we can reduce their impacts if they were to occur in our communities. So the team that brought Lancaster City into this, this project is, there's probably at least a dozen of us that have added to the writing of this plan. So me being here is trying to get it adopted. I can give you kind of an idea of what, how thorough the plan is, but like I said, it's six hundred and seventy-four pages. It's quite massive. But it is very thorough. Most of the hazards in, on our side of the plan are public works-driven. They are water and wastewater utility projects that we're projecting to address in the next five years. So it, there's no guarantee that we're going to get them accomplished in the next five years, but it is a guess. That way, we can apply for the funding to supplement those projects.
Thank you so much. I do have a question for you. Would this be, with the grants, would that be in addition to the FEMA grants as well? Or is, is that all combined?
So there used to be two FEMA grants that we were eligible for. One of the, one of the grants is no longer active. The grant that is still active is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It's centered around natural hazard resistance, which is like earthquakes, floods, winter storms, summer storms, that kind of stuff. So not exactly what we were hoping for, for available grants, but we will till, we will still take advantage of the grants that we are eligible for.
Thank you for that. Do we, does the committee have any questions?
Counselor Diaz, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. One question I had is with the county recently ending its partnership with the Hazmat Environmental Fire Rescue Company, does that have any thing to do with this proposal? Or is that going to affect the plan at all?
It's a good question. So the plan addresses hazardous materials hazards in the county. So this is a little bit more big picture to that, whereas that's more response. I think this plan drives the response delivery that any hazardous materials response team would provide coverage to. So I don't know if it's completely related. Certain, they're symbiotic in that any response team will take the information identified in this plan and use it to their advantage.
Yes, because I did see that they were planning to work with a neighboring county. I just wanted to make sure that the work that we're doing would cover any outside third party that is coming in and...
Absolutely. So they're currently contracting with Lebanon County, and we actually had an incident since they took over that we've, that we worked together on. It went very seamless. We don't see a difference so far, but we're looking forward to the future.
Thank you, and that concludes my questions.
Was that the rotten eggs?
Yeah, it was the rotten eggs, yes.
Just, just so everybody knows, there was an incident with the spill of rotten eggs, so, but that was our hazard incident. It was nothing more than very smelly rotten egg.
It was enough.
Were they rotten before the accident?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions for full council? Then I will go ahead then to move this to full council on September ninth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next thing on the agenda is a bill number five, twenty-two-five, to create a community police review board.
I believe that you were going to reach out to Chief Mendez and I to have a discussion per your comments at the last meeting.
I haven't received any response from you or, or the chief, but you're welcome to bring that forward.
Please feel free to forward me the email request that you sent to Chief and I, because I didn't receive it. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I will go ahead and hold this until we receive response from the mayor and Chief Mendez.
And, and I would just qualify that, if I may, until there's a meeting, right? You had requested a meeting with Chief and I?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That would be all for public works, I mean, for public safety.
I believe in Mr. Harris, please correct me. I believe we need an action to table this.
Yes, that'd be the best.
Counselor Diaz, if you would like to make a motion to table this?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to table this to the second, I guess, meeting of city council. And so hopefully between now and the next meeting, the second meeting, we'll, we'll move forward with that.
I would suggest tabling it to the, to the second meeting of September.
That's correct.
Okay, is that?
That's what I was saying.
Or the next committee meeting.
I was gonna say, it doesn't need to go through committee.
This would be the first time that this is introduced. So Counselor Diaz, would you like to, I mean, thi- this is a bill that you're bringing up through your committee, so you can either speak to the bill and address your committee members, or you can table it to the next committee meeting in November?
To the second meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, October. Would you like to make a motion, Counselor Diaz?
Motion's on the table.
To the, which meeting?
I'm moving it to the second, basically the meeting, the end of September.
And Mr. Harris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this has to go through committee. So the first meeting in November would be, or the committee meeting in November is when?
Committee of Sept- well, is it September or October?
Excuse me, October. I'm skipping a month here.
All right, well, that would be the first committee meeting then in October, and hopefully I'll get a response. Thank you. That motion's on there.
I'm sorry, so it's, motion is to move it to the October committee meeting?
Committee meeting.
Okay.
Anybody wants?
I would second the motion to table this until the October meeting of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all the public safety has at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Diaz. We will now move to the committee of the whole. We have three items on the agenda for this evening. First is Council Resolution number fifty-six, twenty-two-five, which is recognizing welcoming week. All councilors receive this resolution, and it's celebrating welcoming week from September twelfth to September twenty-first, and honoring our neighbors from all around the world who have come to Lancaster and made this their home. It also celebrates Lancaster as a certified welcoming city by Welcoming America. Motion to approve. You have a motion? Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Kind of skipped comment, but I will open it up if council would like to have any questions or comments on the resolution. Or from the public. Move on to Council Resolution number fifty-seven, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. This resolution is honoring Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. I also note that there is a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration on October fourth in Yule Plaza and Binns Park. So if you'd like to salsa dance, I'm sure there's going to be some of that happening in the park. Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, excuse me, the city of Lancaster is also accepting nominations for the Hispanic Community Achievement Award, and those applications for nominations are being accepted until September nineteenth. So if you know someone in the community who has had an impact in the Hispanic community here in Lancaster, I highly encourage you to nominate them. With that, any questions or comments from council? From the public?
Tony Dastro, seven hundred block of New Holland Avenue. Think this is a good resolution, but I do have a request of council for the future. I didn't realize until, I'd say, a month ago, that there was an executive order that determined English is the national language of the United States. I've long enjoyed the fact that that wasn't the case. I think that Lancaster needs to consider making Spanish an official second language to the city. I think there's enough contributions by the Hispanic community and Spanish speakers that it validates it. I mean, even the agendas at these meetings are now bilingual, which is a great thing. I think Lancaster City should formalize Spanish as an official second language in the government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dastro. Any additional public comment?
Mr. Vice President, where might people go to nominate their fellow community members?
Oh, that's a good question. I am not sure. Mayor Sarachi, by chance, do you know the link on this? It is on the city of Lancaster website, cityoflancasterpa.gov.
It is slash Hispanic heritage dash month.
Thank you, Counselor Ahmed.
Thank you.
Awesome. With that, I will hear a motion to move Resolution number fifty-seven to the next full council meeting on September ninth.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The third item on the agenda is Council Resolution number fifty-eight, supporting legislation for community solar facilities. And I believe that was brought forward by Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Vice President Arroyo. This resolution I'm bringing forward to you all. I sent you so, all some information yesterday about what this legislation is in Harrisburg. I have a little blurb. But I wanted to give a shout out to Elizabeth Hoffman, who's a resident, who encouraged me to bring this forward, endorsing some really good legislation that has passed the Pennsylvania House and is currently sitting in committee in the Pennsylvania State Senate. So what I wrote about it is as follows. Community solar enabling legislation being considered in Harrisburg makes it possible for all Pennsylvania residents to source their electricity from solar. Many people that would like to install solar panels maybe don't have the space or the proper roof to install them. I imagine this is a lot of folks living in Lancaster City who may not have a lot of roof space or the proper roof could then source their electricity from solar with the creation of community energy programs and specifically community solar programs. With community solar, you can purchase or lease a share of, in a community solar project or start a project with your neighbors, if you're able to do so. Every month, you receive a credit on your electricity bill for the energy produced by your share. Senate Bill five oh four is the legislation we would endorse with the passage of this resolution. This is the enabling legislation that will provide and create a framework for the creation of community energy facilities in Pennsylvania. There are currently, I think, twenty-four states that have this legislation in place. It passed on a bipartisan vote in the Pennsylvania State House by a vote of a hundred fourteen yeas to eighty-nine nays, and was referred to the Consumer Protection and Professional Licenseur Committee in the Pennsylvania State Senate. Increasing community solar facilities will increase green energy production in Pennsylvania. There are two hundred thirty-five proposed community solar facilities that a Penn State study would suggest would add five hundred twenty permanent jobs across the Commonwealth and create eight hundred, or, sorry, eighty-three point three million dollars of economic activity. In particular, I personally think about the fact that just a couple miles outside the city, we have, you know, farms and other large landowners that could really benefit from something like this, from constructing small sale, small-scale solar, which I'll add, is not subject to as much regulatory scrutiny as like large-scale solar farms. So there's less, you know, kind of hoops that have to be jumped through to make these happen. So there's less, you know, kind of hoops that have to be jumped through to make these happen. And I'll add, but would, you know, these would add to the community energy supply, increase grid resilience by decentralizing, creating decentralized sources of energy. The last note I'll add is that this Senate Bill five oh four is part of a series of legislation supported by Pennsylvania Governor Shapiro as part of his lightning plan to increase energy production and, in particular, renewable energy production in Pennsylvania. I'll stop there, but I will take any comments from council.
Thank you, Counsel Hirsch.
And if there are none, I will open up to comments from the public.
I'm Elizabeth Hoffman, two hundred block of East Ross. And thank you very much, Counselor Hirsch, for taking this on. I'm with a group called Third Act Pennsylvania. It's people in their third act of life, and we're working on climate change and democracy. And this bill is a big focus of our work. We're working with a lot of other organizations in like a group called R Solar PA. And Pennsylvania has been trying to pass this for ten years now. This is like the eleventh year. It's a great way for people who can't afford to put solar on their roof or if their house is too shady or they're renters, whatever, they subscribe to a solar project. So they're not actually owning it, leasing it or anything, they're just subscribing it. And I did have this in Maryland, and it's, you know, you don't notice it on your bill. There's consolidated billing, so you just select that you want to subscribe to a project. And you get a credit, and you're putting solar electrons on the grid. So Pennsylvania is forty-ninth, it ranks forty-ninth in the growth of renewable energy. So we're really falling behind. We only, we get less than one percent of our energy from solar. So we think this is an easy way to add solar to the grid. And thank you again for considering it.
Are there any other comments from the public?
I'm here to support Mrs. Hoffman. And I just wanted to say, I just think this is a great idea, but I'm kind of wondering why people can't do this already? I mean, like, what about this bill makes this, people able to do it? Does any, do you know? Like, why, why do we need this bill so that people can do this? Oh, is it federal? Federally not allowed? State not allowed? Yeah, I think we should do this, gee.
And I'll just, I was just gonna quickly add, just from the research that I had been doing, a lot of it is just about setting up a, like, I mean, I hate to use the word framework, because that sounds very, I don't know. I don't know what the other word would be, but just kind of like, like creating a system to expedite the process of creating community solar, yeah. It's, correct, yes. Are there any other comments from the public? I'll just echo what Ms. Hoffman just said is their organization is trying to get as many municipalities to support this as possible to, you know, kind of create positive momentum to get the Senate to pass this.
Thank you, Counsel Hirsch, for bringing this forward. Do I hear a motion to move Resolution number fifty-eight to full council?
I'll make a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Final item for tonight is the clerk's report, and I believe Mr. Harris submitted that in writing. Are you okay if we skip the verbal report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. With that, I'll hear a motion to adjourn the committee meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.